We'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. This is a Zoom meeting, starting in just a couple of minutes before eight o'clock on the seventh of April. I'll call the meeting to order any additional agenda or consent items? I don't think so. Delegations, would anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? If so, you can just say, "Hey, hey," or raise your electronic hand. And if not, we can move on. There is also a time at the end of the meeting for conversation as well, or a comment, not conversation. Hearing seen none. Approval of the minutes, please.
This is Kevin Sury. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 17, 2021, as submitted.
Second, Paul Daigle. Paul Daigle seconded. Mr. Sury, Mr. Daigle, thank you. Any comments, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Motion for the approval has been passed unanimously. The consent calendar, please.
Kevin Sury, I move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of April 7, 2021, in the amount of $5,617.06.
Mark Soler, no second?
It's been seconded. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Just want to confirm, is that you, Mrs. Hardy, on the phone? You know, as soon as I said that, a phone number dropped off. Mrs. Hardy, you still there?
Let me check that number that's...
I heard her. Wait a minute. Say it again, Roseanne.
I'm here.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm you were here. I know that's your phone number. I thought it would be, at least. Good, okay. Well, hello, Mrs. Hardy.
I've been here the whole time.
I know you have, and I didn't mean it that way. I just wanted to confirm that you were present in the meeting, because we can't see your face, because you're calling in. Next on our agenda is the special appropriation from the CNRE account for the Police Department Mobile Data Terminals, MDTs, P35-929. We have the two lieutenants here this evening. Are you folks making the presentation?
Yes, I'll be doing that, Mark.
Lieutenant Mason, how are you?
Good, how we doing?
Fantastic.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so you've got the agenda item in front of you, so some notes that go along here. MDTs are the mode of data terminals. They're the computers that the officers use in the patrol cars. Basically, you know, we've had, IT is a huge thing. We've been discussing that, you know, through these meetings here for, you know, a better part of a couple of years. There was never any real replacement plan in place for these things. So as we would get a new vehicle every year, then a computer would get replaced. You know, and doing that at two cars a year, it takes a long time to get to our fleet to get these MDTs up to speed. So what we're looking at is, we're looking to replace eight of the mobile data terminal units that are in the vehicles. Basically, at this point, they're out of compliance with state and FBI regulations that we need to make sure we're up with. Out of the older units that we do have in the cars, I did go through Star Computer and use them to update which ones we could. And what was left over were eight units that are just so outdated at this point. They can't be upgraded as far as operating system software goes. So one of the main things that we have here, we've got a deadline for May 11, the Axon, if you recall, the in-car camera system and body cameras, they are coming to do the installation. We have all the hardware currently at the Police Department. These MDT units are needed, you know, to have the Windows 10 operating systems in them to support the software that that runs off of, as well as the next-gen RMS, the records management system that we do run. And again, like I said, for collect, what the state requires, that's the program that runs everybody's criminal histories or licenses during motor vehicle stops, all that type of stuff.
Questions?
Would you like a motion, so we can discuss it, Mark?
We can do that, or we have questions now and then a motion? But go ahead, throw a motion.
This is Kevin Sury. I move to approve a special appropriation in use of $35,929 from CNRE Fund 32 Account 32-60-120-100-003, police vehicles and equipment from fees, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S, with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
You know, I think Roseanne got under the wire on that one.
I'll give it to Roseanne on that one.
And she didn't identify herself, but we know it's Roseanne. Anna, did we want to put an addendum onto that motion to talk about if there were an opportunity through American Rescue Funds, we could go back and reimburse funding? Was this the item?
Yes, this is the item we had discussed earlier, adding that language. So in the event that it was determined, it would make sense to use some of those resources for these items, we could do that.
So I don't think we need to change the motion. I'm going to just put it out there in general. Some of the IT purchases and some of the things we do in our normal course of upgrading IT, and this would certainly qualify under IT according to the preliminary qualifications of the American Rescue Plan, that we will go back and reimburse the town if necessary. And we can do that work a little later. What do you think about that, Anna, as a blanket statement on the record?
Well, I think it's cleaner to identify it as part of the motion, but you are discussing it at the meeting. We would just have to come back and take an additional action if we were going to go that route.
So Kevin, if you amend your motion to say that if available, American Rescue Fund monies will reimburse the town for these IT purchases. So moved.
You're asking me to so move it, or you so moved what you're trying to come to do?
Do you want to amend your...
I'll agree to that amendment to the motion.
Second?
Okay, thank you. So in its entirety, I'll call the motion as we know what's going on here. The bottom line is, it's going to be a lot of moving parts with ARP, as we refer to it. There's going to be a lot of moving parts, and we're going to have to, well, we'll get there when we get there. So all in favor of the motion to...
Oh, Mark, if I may... Yeah, so Sergeant Mason had contacted me earlier today, and he wanted to have further discussion about the dollar amount, so you would allow him to do that.
Sergeant Mason, you're back on.
Okay, so in looking at this project, you know, there are clearly multiple manufacturers that make computer equipment, we get that. But there are only so many that really go after, you know, item-specific things for law enforcement. So based on the town's purchasing policy, I went out, I got, you know, put out the request for bids, I got five different quotes back. The one that I've asked for today, and I did so in the spirit of, of course, you know, going after the least amount of dollars that we have to spend when we're looking at town money, of course, and I think Anna can attest to that for most projects I do, I try to make this, you know, like it's coming out of my own wallet. So, but with this technology here, there is one company, all the other quotes came in right around, you know, from $43,200 to $46,700. And the one that we were looking to go with was Patrol PC. They're out of North Attleboro, Massachusetts. Their products are law enforcement-specific. And one of the things that I really looked at doing there with them, and the reason I wanted to go, their quote was $46,000, I think it was $46,165. And they have a product that, for the officers on the road, right now, if they have to utilize that mobile data terminal they're driving, and of course, that's exempt as far as under the law, the hands-free device for law enforcement units. They're taking their eyes off the road, and they're looking at certain things. These other units are more, you know, user-friendly. They have what we call, just as a quote-unquote, hotkeys on the front of the terminal where they can be preconfigured, so that officer can push either button 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, and get that exact screen they're looking for, instead of trying to move a mouse around and locating that thing to, you know, put in somebody's, say, license plate. And they get a response quick, their eyes are back on the road much quicker. So I look at that as an officer safety issue and also a public safety issue, because they're taking their eyes off the road for more than a couple of seconds, you know, even at 35 miles an hour, you know, they're traveling quite a distance, almost a football field within, you know, within five seconds. So that was one of the things there. They have the ability to, with their units on the side of the terminal, there is an infrared scanner, so your driver's license right now, if you were to look at the back of it and ever wonder what that barcode is about, well, all that driver's information is on there. So the officer, instead of sitting at the computer, entering every single, you know, stroke of the key for all the information on the front of the license, they would scan it, it would immediately backfill that call, also reducing the amount of time that that officer has, you know, a civilian on a stop. And that's one of the things that we do have to account for in state statistics annually, you know, along with the racial profiling and everything else, is how long do our motor vehicle stops last? If it was a general enforcement stop, like I just saw you going through a stop sign or a stoplight, or you passed in no passing zone, they look to see how much time these officers are on those stops. If it's unnecessary time, and there's a repetitive pattern of this, then we have to go back and, you know, explain why, you know, it's taking an officer 20 minutes to write a simple infraction for somebody that has nothing wrong with them, just say everything is good, their license is good, insurance is good, registration's good. Why is it taking 25 minutes to process an infraction where we can, you know, get that done in probably five minutes, you know, with the technology upgrades? So in looking at all the quotes that I had received, also what I did was, I went through Star Computer and had them, you know, verify, look at each different type of unit from each vendor to say, you know, make sure they met the requirements that we are looking for, the state's looking for, the FBI is looking for, that the body camera software is going to be able to handle, as well as the, you know, record management system. So Patrol PC definitely came out with the best product. And again, I looked at the fact of, you know, yes, it's more money. It's about $11,000 more than the initial appropriation I went for, and, you know, and of course, learning with the funds, if this fell under the, you know, the IT infrastructure of the town, that potentially, you know, this could be an avenue we look at. Because where the funds are, where I'm looking to take these funds out of right now, come from the vehicle equipment. So basically, when these cars are out in the road jobs and we charge hourly for those cars, well, that goes into an account where we draw those funds from. And I just want to make sure that we're not draining that account to a point where, you know, Anna may look at, you know, come back to me and say, "Hey, we might have problems meeting the acquisition payments for this year." So that's, I think that's part and parcel of the reimbursement, whether it goes one way or the other. We stick with this lower bid, or we go with the, you know, the higher bid with the better technology that overall is going to be a safer product and probably a more reliable, better product for the officers on the road.
Okay. So is there an amendment that's needed?
How about if we're interested in this, why don't we shell this previous amendment, the previous motion, just start all over again to include the language to try and get the money out of that? Because I've come up with something. I just need to have a dollar figure, the current dollar figure. Mike, if you could give me that. Lieutenant Mason, if you could give that to me?
Yeah, I'm getting it right now. The number is going to be $46,165.19, and this would go to Patrol PC?
Well, I mean, but it would be from the same account, correct? The police vehicles and equipment? Okay, so that's all that. And looking at the supporting documentation, you said about that's in the account. Right now, we have $121,951 available in that account, so it would more than cover the amount you're asking for. So I would like to withdraw that motion if Roseanne would agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. We want to go with the new one?
Yeah, go with the new.
Okay, this is Kevin Sury. I'll move to approve a special appropriation in use of $46,165.19 from CNRE Fund 32 Account 32-60-120-100-003, police vehicles and equipment from fees, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S, with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the budget, current budget. If permissible, efforts will be made to fund the purchases of this equipment through the American Relief Program.
I second.
I think the gentleman were being patient, allowing you the opportunity to second that again. Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Thank you, Mr. Sury. Are there any questions for the lieutenants?
Yes, for Officer Mason, how many vehicles will remain that will not have this upgrade?
So as of right now, we will have eight vehicles will be upgraded, and five vehicles are already upgraded to the newer units that we have.
Okay, so how many will be on the road that will not have the upgraded equipment?
Currently, right now, we have eight that are on the road without the upgraded equipment.
All right, so this expenditure will then equip, all of our vehicles will be equipped with the upgrade?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, all 13 patrol vehicles will be, with this going forward, all of our patrol vehicles will be equipped with the upgrade, upgraded IT stuff.
Okay, and are there any, just so that we can look ahead, are there any other police-related vehicles that will not be upgraded?
Just the administrative vehicles do not have the computers in them, so you're looking at the chief, the lieutenants, and the detectives do not have this equipment in them.
And you do not feel that that's necessary?
No, it's not necessary. For the purpose of what these units are for, these are definitely for the patrol officers on the road on a daily basis, not the administrative staff.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lieutenant, real quick, the other five units, do they have the same software? Is it going to be compatible, or are we going to have two different versions here?
Yeah, so it'll be two different versions. So what those are, those are the Panasonic CF33 tablet units that those vehicles have in there. And we have, you know, we've been doing, this isn't something I just kind of, like, just started to research. I've had Patrol PC down at the Police Department, actually on several occasions. And, you know, I think eventually, those other cars, as they get cycled out, that we will be moving everything to it. So those other units that we currently do have will eventually turn into the Patrol PC product. But the one thing I, you know, I made sure with Star Computer was the compatibility, you know, between the cars, even though it is a different product, the officer really won't know it, other than, you know, instead of saying Panasonic up top, it'll have the Patrol PC logo. And of course, the Patrol PC units will have, you know, clearly better features on them.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant Mason, have you been assured that all the equipment would be delivered on time, so that when Axon shows up on May 11th, we're good to go? Everything's unboxed, ready to roll?
Yeah, so they did lock me in for, I'm sorry, let me just grab the eighth and ninth. So that is literally the 11th hour, because on May 10th would be my drop-dead day, because they're going to be there on May 11th as their day that they're going to start the install for Axon. So they did lock us in for installation dates on the eighth and the ninth, so long as, yeah, so long as we get past Board of Finance.
Great, good luck to you. I think it's, and I do think this will qualify again, and this will qualify for a technology reimbursement to American Rescue, which would replenish your CNRE account, which would be most helpful to everybody. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just, I have one.
Mr. Cunningham.
The barcode reader for the back of the driver's license, that infrared scanner, can that be added to the other units, the older units?
That's, so that was definitely a Patrol PC, that was their, like, proprietary scanner. I can definitely look at having that done to the Panasonic CF33s for sure. I can definitely look into that.
It seems that that's a really important feature for the, as you say, the speed of getting this traffic stop completed, and the safety of the officer, and the accuracy of the information going into the database. Just seems like that's a great thing, if it's not too costly, something to look into.
Right, absolutely. And the only reason I had not looked into that was because I had to figure out which avenue we could take first, just because of the outdated units. I didn't want to look at, okay, you know, I wasn't sure if it was going to be Panasonic we went with or that, but I can definitely, I will definitely look into that.
Looks like a great upgrade, moving in the right direction.
Yes, indeed. Great. Any other questions for you, the lieutenants, this evening? Thanks, I'm doing a great job, much appreciated. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? I see there's a 6-0 vote. I thank you again, great detail. Thank you, great upgrade, as Mr. Cunningham said, and I wish you luck next week or two at Board of Finance. And on May 11th, I might come down to the PD just to check things out a little bit. Looking forward to that. Been waiting for this for a long time. Thank you. Thank you both. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by a group that has petitioned to have a presentation, at their request, to the Board of Selectmen. Welcome, welcome all of you. I know that there is an orchestrated presentation going on. I think you were, someone asked, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes would be an allowable time, and this doesn't happen all the time, so we welcome you. Hi, who's taking over tonight?
Hi, there's five of us here that are going to be presenting from our group. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
All right, great, yeah, thanks, everyone. Thanks for having us. You know, I think, given a lot of the previous discussions that have been going on here, what we've talked about so far, about mental health in Eastline, and the continued commitment to the beautification of Eastline, and a lot of other discussions, are really great segues into our presentation. And, you know, actually, any topic discussed here really would be a good segue, as I think our presentation will eventually make clear. And, yeah, today we'll be talking, you know, proposing to adopt a resolution to declare racism a public health crisis in Eastline. And you can go ahead and advance the slide, Emily. So we are, we're the Southeastern Connecticut Organization for Racial Equity, we're known as SCORE. And, you know, we're a nonpartisan organization committed to anti-racist action, and we have this ultimate goal of making people of color feel safe, heard, and welcome in southeastern Connecticut. We are an official nonprofit, we're certified as a 501(c)(3) from the IRS, and we've made some big strides since we've, you know, since we founded in 2020. We have established scholarships at both Eastline High School and New London High School for graduating seniors. We've worked extensively with the Eastline Board of Education in their efforts to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion in curriculum and student life. And so, yeah, so we're just going to go around real quick and introduce ourselves. And I am Benestrowski. I grew up in Niantic. I graduated Eastline High School in 2013, and I'm currently a PhD candidate in organizational behavior and theory at Carnegie Mellon University.
And hi, my name is Serena Valentin. I have lived in Eastline for pretty much my whole life. I graduated from Eastline High School in 2016, and right now, I will be graduating from Western Connecticut State University with a Bachelor of Science in Music Education this May. Thank you so much for having me.
I am Nikki Padilla. I also grew up in Niantic. I've lived here for over 40 years, and I am a former public school teacher, now a professor at mental college. I'm the director of programming for SCORE.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Esteban Garcia. I've been a resident of Eastline for the last eight years, and I work at Southern Connecticut State University in the Finance and Administration Division.
And I'm Annalise Lapitas. I'm from Niantic, Connecticut, also pretty much lived there my whole life. I graduated from Eastline High School in 2016 with Serena, and I'm currently a first-year medical student at the University of Vermont, hoping to pursue pediatrics. So that's all of us. So we're going to get started with the rest of the presentation. So this is kind of just an overview of what we're going to be talking about today, a few definitions, some statistics, the actionable long-term solutions we hope will come from the proposed resolution to declare racism a public health crisis, as well as support that we've gathered for the resolution thus far. So just to start with a broad definition of racism, the global definition is that it is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on race. So what that does is it unfairly disadvantages one group or groups while unfairly advantaging other groups. And what this does is that the marginalized or oppressed groups, in this case BIPOC, so Black Indigenous People of Color, are not able to reap the benefits of society in the same way that the unfairly advantaged group is able to do so. And so this can be broken down into three levels. So we have institutional, so that's what we think of as, you know, law, politics, healthcare, economics, kind of the overarching societal norms and practices that structure society. And then there's personally mediated racism, which includes prejudice. So these are the assumptions and judgments made, often based on stereotypes and discrimination, which are the actions that are taken based on those stereotypes and health beliefs. And then there's internalized racism, which is the acceptance by marginalized groups of negative messages about their own worth and abilities. And as Ben mentioned, that really ties into the negative impacts on mental health that racism has. And while not an official level of racism, I just thought it would be good to touch on what microaggressions are, because they're, you know, they're not explicit overt racism that we think of automatically, they more so involve implicit bias. So these are behaviors or actions that communicate stereotypes. So an example would be if an African-American man was walking towards you, and you grab your purse closer to you. That's an example of a microaggression. And the way that I like to describe them is as paper cuts, right? They're not as overt as explicit racism, but the intent might not be malicious, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the impact is not harmful. And the more paper cuts you get, those add up and sting, more so than just one. So this brings us to the Kaiser Family Foundation, which describes the social determinants of health. So these are the contexts in which we live, we work, we go to school, et cetera, that contribute to our health outcomes and quality of life risks. And so you see, they range from economics to education to food, but something that connects all of them, or that stems through each of them, is racism and discrimination. And they're all interconnected. So when racism affects one, it affects the other. So for example, you know, if African-Americans or Hispanic people are not given the same opportunities to get the same jobs or same pay as their white counterparts, you know, their income is lower, they can't afford the same housing, they might be forced to live in areas where schools are not as well-funded, you know, food insecurity, organic food is more expensive, so they might have to go with the less nutritious food just to put it on the table for their families. And this leads to what is called the weathering hypothesis. And so what that is, is that the accumulation of... And so what that is, is that the accumulation of all of this socioeconomic hardship and stress, that accumulates with the stress that comes from racism and discrimination and leads to worse health outcomes. And what this does, the stress of the racism, having to fight for your rights every day to prove that you deserve equitable treatment, on top of all these other social factors, it releases cortisol, our body's stress hormone. And what cortisol, excess cortisol does to the body is it increases your risk of consequences, particularly cardiovascular disease. And we know that minorities have a higher rate of chronic illnesses, including cardiovascular disease. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties with the PowerPoint. Okay, back on track. So since we know that racism contributes to health outcomes, why is it considered a public health crisis? Well, to be considered as such, you have to meet the following three criteria. So it has to affect large numbers of people, which it affects over 100 million BIPOC individuals in the US. It has to threaten health over the long term, which, you know, as we just talked about with chronic illness, it does. And lastly, it requires the adoption of large-scale solutions. And that's really why we're here today. Racism, dismantling racism requires a lot of work, and it has deep roots in our history and today. And it's really important to consider it a problem of the present and not just the past, because that's how these health inequities get worse and become exacerbated. So this has always been an issue, but I think the COVID pandemic has definitely shown light on the issue. So for example, 23.6% of COVID deaths are Black individuals, but Black individuals only make up about 13% of the population. And so this is an alarming disproportionate amount of COVID deaths. And, you know, that comes into, you know, access to equitable treatment. There are stereotypes that, you know, prevent BIPOC individuals from getting medications that they need, about their tolerance for pain when they go to the emergency room, getting access to information about COVID, about the COVID vaccine. And then there's also the fact that, you know, there is mistrust of the medical community because of the discrimination that they have faced all these years. So Connecticut has really high aggregate health outcomes to bring it home. We rank pretty high. We're third or fourth, but when it comes to health disparity, we're 42nd, and 50 being the worst. So that means that the lowest lows are so low that they don't really even contribute to the total, because the highs are so high. That's how much inequity exists here when it comes to health. And some of these statistics are really scary. Black babies are more than four times likely to die before their first birthday compared to babies born to white mothers. So it just shows that racism is this vicious cycle that impacts the health of these individuals from the moment they're born, and then they have to go into a society that unfairly disadvantages them. You know, the diabetes statistics, diabetes complications, I'm learning about that right now, are preventable with screening. And so when there's two times the rate of dying from diabetes complications, that just demonstrates that the care that these individuals deserve, that BIPOC individuals deserve, is not being given to them adequately or equitably.
So let me get to the actionable, long-term ways to address these issues and to work to increase the momentum in finding more solutions, especially at the local level. So addressing disparities and inequities among Black and Indigenous and people of color, then helps to address other factors of structural inequity, which will contribute to the overall public health inequity of the whole town, the region, the state, affecting everyone in the area. And this is under the umbrella thought that racial inequity and racism should not just be accepted as part of our lives that we have no control over, because it's, you know, been part of our history for so long and it's so ingrained in everything. Because we do have the power to change it, it will just take a lot of work and a lot of momentum, which is what we're trying to push for. So declaring racism a public health crisis is the first step and will hopefully lead to the board viewing all actions and policies following its adoption through the lens that acknowledges racism and addresses the need for inequity, the need for equity to create tangible and meaningful change. So with that being said, how can you all help? The tangible outcome that we're really looking for out of this, and really kind of just trying to introduce, is that every action taken by the board, such as budgetary decisions or proposed policies really of any kind, will include a report or a subsection in that document that addresses how the action will influence minority communities and communities of Black Indigenous and people of color, to just evaluate how that decision could affect people differently in the town, instead of just having one decision and thinking that it will overwhelmingly create an effect for every person in an equal way. So the second part to that would be that if the influence could potentially be negative to those communities, how will the board ensure equitable outcomes and coming up with suggestions or plan to make sure that every community is being affected equally and getting the value out of whatever decision is made by the board in the same way or in an equitable way? So an analogy that I like to use when describing this type of subsection or report in your plans, is that as a teacher, as someone who's studying education, when I make a lesson plans, they teach me to have sort of, I guess, like subsections of the lesson plan to address, how can I adjust this lesson to accommodate my students who maybe have learning disabilities, who are dyslexic, a student who might be blind, a student who might have autism? I can't teach the same exact way for every single one of those students, because my job is to teach every student. So if I'm teaching one lesson the exact same way to everyone, then my blind student will not learn from that lesson, or my student with ADHD won't have the time that they need to complete the assignment and get the value, the benefits, and the knowledge from that experience that all of the other students will get. So that's something that has a lot of parallels, although it is not, you know, exactly the same, but it is an analogy I like to use, because it is harder to teach that way, but you can't let those students that need more accommodations or more help to get the full value of what you're trying to provide, you can't just let them fall short of what your job is supposed to be in order to provide those things for everyone. So that is really the tangible thing that we want to work towards from this resolution, is having that subsection of how each action will affect all of the different communities within our bigger community.
And so now I'd like to share with you some of the local town support that we've gotten for these initiatives. So part of the task of SCORE is to inform the southeastern Connecticut of how they can get involved in dismantling racism in our area. And so we do that largely through social media. And through social media, we have informed the public of this petition to declare racism a public health crisis. And so we currently have 663 people in town who have signed the petition, in support of this. And also, we do have some, and I believe, rather than me reading through these quotes, I believe that this presentation will be made available to you. But you can see that we have quotes from local community members from Eastline who are involved in the healthcare industry to, in support of this. Particularly, we have the Director of Legislative Health District. We also have the co-creator and Director of Reading to Connect. And we also have a physician assistant who lives in town. So they speak directly to what they have, how they have seen racism affect individuals in healthcare. And so I think it's really important to hear from them and to see that there really is a community support for this initiative.
So this is our last slide before we get to any questions, but this is the resolution that was sent in a package that contains all the letters that Nikki was talking about, all the statistics and facts that we gathered. So this resolution is available to you all to read through, and we really do hope you consider adopting this, because as Serena very eloquently said, this is the first step towards making a bigger change in our town, in New London County, in the state overall, as we've demonstrated, really needs it. And I think this is how we can be anti-racist, rather than simply non-racist.
And I just quickly want to add that, I don't think it was previously said in any of the other slides, but there are 21 other Connecticut towns and cities that have made this declaration of racism as a public health crisis, some of them being Old Saybrook, New London, and Colchester, which are close by. So it's not something that's uncommon or unheard of, and I think it's making a lot of progress throughout the state and this area as well.
Great. Thank you all. Much appreciated, and appreciate you being conscientious of the time. You did very good. I saw your slide presentation. I read through it, and I said, oh, this is going to take hours to get through. And it shows that you put a lot of energy into this. And while you have much passion for this, clearly, you also were professional in being to be succinct and to the point, and that's appreciated and commendable. Are there any questions?
Just one comment, too. I've talked with Annalise a couple times leading up, just we had some really good discussions. You know, you talked about passion when we talked about, you know, the mental health things here, too. I think they bring the same passion here, too. And, you know, and these are people with roots in the town and bringing their concerns to us, just like any organization would be. I think we have to, and I appreciate them bringing this forward, too, because even if we can't agree, it's important to have these discussions on things. And I think that's a thing to do, continue to speak, continue to talk. I very much enjoy talking with Annalise on a lot of things when we got even off-topic. Serena, my son graduated from Westcon, so I know where you were, and that gorgeous building they just built that you attended, you got finished, it's there. So, you know, I can relate to that, too. But thank you for coming to us. Look forward to continuing the dialogue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Annalise. And any other questions?
Just follow. Thank you guys for coming. Very, very good presentation. I appreciate you laying out statistics and those few slides to give us some numbers. That's very useful to see. Thank you.
Great.
Besides saying thank you, I'll just say, great representations of graduates from the Eastline School System. So thank you all very, very much.
And I would, I would just add, I thought it was very informative. You know, in my own mind, I thought Andrew said a little bit about racism, and there are aspects of it that I really didn't appreciate. And I thought your example with, you know, clutching your purse a little bit closer when someone that is different than you walks by. I can see how those things happen, and they're very subtle, but it can really be offensive to somebody, like hitting the car lock button on your car, and all the car locks go down and make a lot of noise when someone you're apprehensive of comes to your car. And there's the subtleties that I'm glad you pointed out, and we need to start thinking about. So thank you.
Dan, did you just say you clutched your purse tighter when?
I always do, yeah. No, I, but no, you know, there's these little subtle things. You don't even think about what I could do.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I think it's important to start thinking about those things, and so it's very helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for your presentation. Much appreciated.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
Next on our agenda is the discussion, discussion of possible action of the application of FEMA funds and the American Rescue Plan funds to the 2122 capital plan. Anna, you're back on. Did you leave us for a while? Did you get to see Jeopardy and come back, or are you taping it for later? Okay.
That was before I signed in.
Okay, right, right. So Anna and I have had multiple conversations. First of all, y'all remember that FEMA money that we got, the big windfall, that we took some of the money, applied it to the Public Safety Building, which is in a great stage. Maybe we'll get an update from Paul in a little bit on that. But, you know, there were funds that were left over, and we put them in contingency. And what we don't want to happen is to see that contingency money turn into rainy day fund money, you know, undesignated fund balance. At the end of the year, that's what happens to all money we don't spend. So there is a thought that we will want to apply some of the FEMA money towards some of our capital items, to clean up some of that FEMA money and/or do some rolling over into the next year, first of all. Second of all, there has been discussion, obviously, I've had some discussion with citizens in our town, with members of the Board of Finance. I've spoken, I've met with the Board of Education. They have different rules when it comes to the American Rescue Plan. And I just wanted to put it out there that if we get an inkling that we're going to be able to apply some of these funds towards some of these one-time capital items, we're going to want to do that, because we'll be able to reduce our tax burden to the citizens this year. And although, you know, we're still in kind of an economic strife, as much as there's a lot of money being dished out by the feds these days, we always want to keep mindful of keeping taxes as low as possible. So Anna, is there anything you want to update us on, or was that enough of the discussion?
Yeah, I would just point out, the portion of FEMA funds that Mark was referring to, there was $327,046 in change that, at the time, we just made a motion to put it into the contingency account in the, you know, in the general fund. Items that had been talked about possibly using the funds for were some repairs to the boardwalk, to pay for the police body cams, which in fact, we did do an appropriation of $151,601 for that purpose. And another item that was talked about using the funds for was sidewalk work. So with that said, we started with $327,046 with the body cam appropriation of $151,601. We have a remaining balance of $175,445 left of, you know, the funds from that FEMA windfall.
So basically, we're going to be putting together, and this is more of an informational item on our agenda, that we're, we're going to have an avalanche of, you know, moving money around, not necessarily new spending or anything like that, but saying, you know, here's some opportunities to use some of this money for this and some of that money for that. And that's coming at you, and we're busy working at the town hall to come up with a reasonable, sensible plan to apply some of these funds.
Mark, I'd like, when we do discuss that, the two items that Anna discussed and that we, that Anna discussed that we talked about before, repairs to boardwalk, I think there's been discussion about sealing the boardwalk.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Here's an opportunity to do it.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, I know we're waiting on the corridor study, but there are other sidewalks that could be interconnected. We have done some connections of recent, but I would like to start making headway on that. So I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
And I think in the plan of conservation development, I know downstairs in the Engineering Department, they have a plan of proposed sidewalks, so we have a plan to start that. Or prioritize plan, I believe.
You got it. So yes. You got it. So yes, in 100% in agreement with you. We did talk about the ceiling, and that would be, you know, direct FEMA funds. That's, you know, the boardwalk, FEMA. So it's kind of why we got the funds to begin with. So sealing that boardwalk would be most appropriate. And then, yes, sidewalks, I think are going to be a big part of the discussion. We talked, talked about not only FEMA, but American Rescue Funds. Great opportunities coming up for our town.
And Mark, when we have that discussion, if we could get an idea of how often that should be sealed, so that maybe we could put it, if it's something that has to be done in five years, every two years, every 20 years, it'd be good to know. So we could at least maybe put that in our capital plan.
Yeah.
Was start missing these things because the budget cuts and then.
Yep.
You talked about, Mark, you talked about the boardwalk?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I actually was talking with Jason, the Parks and Rec's foreman, about that today. And he said, the frequency gets more frequent the older it gets. So he said just, but he said, you know, he said, that's something he was going to look at anyway. So.
Good.
And I have a suggestion also.
Yes, ma'am.
I was talking with Joe Burgah a few days ago, and we are way behind on the tree, tree repairs that we need to make or tree takedowns, which would definitely be related to FEMA and weather. So I'd like to see some money go that way so that we could get a little more up to date. And I can think a couple of the recent storms that we've had have also resulted in more tree damage throughout town, which they haven't been able to get to.
No doubt about it.
And Mark, one last thing, we're also going to have an immediate need at the Morris Building to do some remediation.
Right. We're on top of all. I think that's going to be a bigger picture item. But I'll have a discussion with you on that.
Yeah, we'll need to move fast on that.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, lots happening and lots to do. And we will, I just kind of wanted to start that ball rolling. We are working on the FEMA funds that we shouldn't forget about. And again, the American Rescue Funds as it applies to the budget. We have, if you remember, the microwave dishes that we have a couple year plan. It was how much money, Anna? Was it 60,000? No, it was more than that.
So each of the, we have three microwave units in the capital improvement plan, two for replacement in the upcoming 2012, 2122 fiscal year, and then the third one in 2223. They each cost approximately $33,000 each. So for the two that we have in next year's budget, we were proposing to run them through the acquisition plan. So the expenditure in the budget would be 14,000.
But, but that's what's in your budget that you've already passed, but that some of the thought is, that is one item. It's tech, it's IT, that we could maybe pay with American Rescue Funds, take it out of the, say, $14,000 off taxes. It's, you know, it's nickels and dimes, but pay for it in cash and just get the project done. And there might be a few other, other items on the capital plan that we can treat that way. It will be, it will be a discussion we'd like to have and move it to the Board of Finance. Unfortunately, the guidance on this is not going to come out before they settle their budget. It'll be, probably the guidance will only be coming out a week or two before we go to referendum. So we're, we're going to be playing a little bit of a balance game, or pass the budget as is, and then if, you know, we could always move money around in reverse as well. So just, just putting that out there. We're busy working on that. The Board of Ed's rules are a little different in that, in their operational plan, you remember, they talked about social workers, math coaches, extra paras that will be needed because of the kids, because it's going to be so many kids that are going to be lost in the system that they feel that there's going to be a lot of support needed. That support is directly linked because of COVID. So it's in their operational funds, their operational budget, however, it's COVID-related. It's not long-term related. They might not need all these social workers and all these math coaches five years from now, but they would add them in now. So they, they do have a different set of parameters. We need to look at our capital plan and the new projects going forward. And of course, all these other organizations that we've talked about that'll have coming in, in the coming weeks. So if there's nothing else, we can move on. Okay, ex officio reports. Roseanne, would you like to start tonight?
Yes, I would, because I am going to be quiet. I'm going to pass. I know, it's a shock.
I'm. Nice to hear your voice. I hope I can see you soon.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Salerno?
I don't have anything at the moment.
Yeah, okay. Mr., well, I don't know, Dago?
Thank you. Public Safety Building, progress continues to be made. They did identify a couple long lead material items that may affect the completion date, but they're not ready to give up on potentially finishing in June or the beginning of July. They'll have better clarity when they meet this week. They have some outstanding change orders. They've approved some. They've returned almost $10,000 worth of credits from the contractor on some items that weren't needed, or they worked around in another way. So that's good. And get an update here in a week or so when we have our meeting. But so far, both the clerk of the works and the town department heads are satisfied. There was one concern raised concerning approving a change order without reviewing it with the building inspector, but that's been clarified and they're on the same page going forward. They were minor changes, but they need to be, you know, if it changes the plans that were approved by the building inspector, then obviously, any changes need to be concurred to by the building inspector. So they're, they're recovering from that. All in all, it's progressing well.
Much thanks, Mr. Dago. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, I attended the Historic Properties Commission meeting last night. We actually, we did it in person at the Samuel Smith Farmstead in the barn, and it was very nice. It was a lot of air blowing through. Everybody felt secure, and we were far enough apart. So it was nice to get back together in person. Samuel Smith, they have four events that are being planned for the upcoming season that they think that they can do with, in view of COVID and things listening up a little bit. As far as the garden out there, they have to raise plots. They've already awarded 10 plots. There's 19 plots available. They gave two plots to, I guess it's a single parent that is trying to augment, feeding her children with the, with the produce from the two plots. So that was a, a nice thing that they did, and a lot of activity there. Still working on the grant. It's up in Hartford, State of Connecticut, a grant for the Samuel Smith property to help complete some of the work that's being done there. They're going to be restaining second coat on the front of the house, I believe, and putting first coats on some of the other areas that haven't been done yet. So they're moving along, and it's, the project out there is really shaping up. It's going to be a nice, nice asset for the town. So that's, that's my report.
Mr. Siri?
Last night, I was, or no, Monday night, two nights ago, I was ex officio of the Board of Ed. Henry Kidd was made a 12-month assistant principal at the high school, and he's a very well-liked teacher, now a very well-liked administrator and asset to the district. So happy for him. They also talked about the disaster, which is the high school baseball field. And right now, just to resad the outfield, not to address the problems that have caused it to get in the condition it is, would be 63, approximately $63,000. So Jeff, Superintendent Jeff Newton, brought it forward for discussion, and Chris Lompe, the facilities director, said they really need to address this for a long-term solution. The first time I heard Eric Baumann brought up the word turfs, field, and that, obviously, a large price tag attached to that, but, you know, it needs drainage and so forth. So it's something they're aware of and working on. Yeah, only other thing I have with Parks and Rec related is the family trivia night. Mark, were you going to talk about that? Do you want me to mention it?
Go for it.
Okay, on April 23rd, they're going to have a family trivia night at McCook's Park. It's limited to 45 cars, where they're going to have the questions on a big screen, and you'll answer from your car. So they're looking to, I guess, it's limited to 45 people. Sounds like it could be a good family fun night. I could see with the brains of Sarah, Alex, and Jocelyn Salerno, that family could win.
Wow.
So.
Thanks, Kevin.
That's it. They have a meeting tomorrow night. Parks and Rec does tomorrow night, but I can't report on that until next meeting.
Great, thank you. I'll make mine short of working out, talking all day. So I talked about the ARP, we're calling it, American Rescue Plan, waiting for direction. I'm getting all sorts of communication from CCM, from National League of Cities, cost, Courtney's office about waiting. And then there'll be rules, and then there'll be the interpretation of the rules. So stand by for all of that. We, it's coming out from the U.S. Treasury, who will take every bit of the 60 days that have been allotted to come up with how we can spend that and justify expenses, so they don't come back in in 2024, 2025 and take the money back because we misused it, or, you know, our interpretation was off. So we're going to be working hard on that. We're also, yesterday, it never, COVID is the gift that just keeps on giving. The governor came out with executive orders yesterday that throws everything upside down when it comes to referendums, absentee ballots, dates. We have, we have the power and the authority to change the dates that are subscribed to in our charter. So our charter says you must have it on, you know, the town meeting on this date, the referendum on this date. We have the power, the temporary power, to change those dates to better suit our needs. And that might be the case this year in that we might want to allow a three-week window, not a two-week window. Our charter only allows 14 days. But we might need three weeks window for a referendum between the town meeting and the referendum because they are allowing for absentee ballots. We won't mail ballots to everyone. We will do it by request. But that is still being allowed. And, you know, in this day and age of disenfranchisement and all that's going on in Georgia, I think, I think we collectively might feel a compelling need to allow that to happen and make sure absentee ballots are available, not just to the sick, not just to the people who are going to be out of town, but all those who want an absentee ballot with no excuse, as it's going to be allowed. Our lawyers are interpreting the executive orders. We're coming up with solutions, and I will present that, them to you at our next regular meeting. If it needs to be done sooner than that, I will call for a special meeting, but I think we'll be able to wait two weeks. But it has turned everything upside down. So maybe, just a little bit, we might just change some dates around. But it will put a lot of pressure on the clerks and the legislators to then go ahead and mail a whole lot of ballots. Not a lot of people get involved with referendums. As you know, small percentage, 10% of the voting public comes out from referendums on a non-controversial year, which there has been no controversy the last 12 years on these budgets. Let's write that 14 years since, since we had multiple referendum votes. But this might turn more people on to the process, which is a good thing. More people involved is a good thing. But I'll let, let the rest be said. I'll be coming back to you for, for approval of changing dates in the process, once we know, have a clearer picture. But you might hear and read in the paper that that is happening, and we want to make sure we're accommodating. Celebrating Slime was canceled, as you know. I think I may, maybe mentioned it in the last meeting. I want to make sure I just get it out. And we're doing that for several reasons, one being Sale Fest was canceled the week before. So we think there'll be a thirst for public events, and I think all those people that would have gone to Sale Fest would come to Celebrating Slime. There is still a requirement that we maintain crowd control numbers, and we're not able to do that with our streets open in an open environment. So we just think for the best of all that we'll, we'll maybe make a bigger oyster fest when it comes out in October, okay? And then we'll have mini festivals throughout the summer that will be less advertised and less big, but bring people to our sidewalk. And will hopefully our 90 main street group will assist us. That's all I have this evening. Are there any questions for me? Oh, one other thing I have is, is we need, we have a need to start scheduling American Rescue Plan meetings. I did suggest that we meet a couple times, you know, in between meetings, maybe once a week. Part of it will be a regular meeting, and some will be our off-meeting nights. I have Tuesday night available. I don't know if we can get at least a quorum, four of us. I don't know if we'll all make all these meetings, but the 13th of April, I could get some department heads and some commissions together and start working on these plans.
I think that's a good idea.
Yep, 13th. Is everybody available, or can most people make a 7:00 meeting?
I cannot.
Hey, Mark, do we, how is our schedule load looking for our regular meetings? Before we schedule new meetings, is our schedule load supposed to be heavy the next couple meetings? Can some of this be done during regular meetings?
This was the heaviest, and we will do regular meetings as well. This was the heaviest meeting I've had in two years, probably. It seemed that way tonight. Non-budget meeting.
Well, like, next meeting, do we have a lot of the agenda?
I don't have the agenda put together yet for next meeting. We have a, we have two items already on the agenda, always financial. So you're right, we will certainly bring people in for that. They don't have to be long, in 30 minutes long. They can just come on in and say, this is what we'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I just prefer to have them on regular meeting nights if we don't have a extremely busy night, just because it's regular meeting, make it more attendance from the public.
We can wait.
Tuesday, I'll have to pan. I have two meetings, but I would prefer to have a longer regular meeting than.
If you'd like, we can start Board of Selectment meeting maybe a little earlier on the 4th, on the 21st, and we'll bake some of it into our, if you don't mind, if we can at least start a little bit earlier, we'll have a special meeting, then the regular meeting will put, will put departments in our regular meeting.
Yeah, because, Mark, I, I do that game timing, where I run scoreboards and that for college events, and I kind of build it around meetings that I know I'm going to have in the course of a month. And it's hard for me, once I get assigned, to back out.
We'll wait till the 21st. There might be a need to have a couple meetings, special meetings. So we can wait on that.
Mark, were you, were you able to, to develop a form that perhaps we wouldn't, that would give us kinds of, kind of a heads up if some of these forms went out to groups ahead of time? We could look at them and then perhaps not have to have as much time for discussion as we did this evening?
I do, we have the draft of a form that Kevin and Sandy have been working on, so we can finish that up and give it out to some of the people. You're right, it might cut down on some of, some of the discussion. That's a good idea. Let me, let me put, we'll finish up the form this week, and I'll send it out to all the departments for distribution.
All right. So is the 13th out?
Yeah, we're just going to wait till the 21st.
Okay.
For now.
Yeah, and I'm fine, you know, starting early is fine. I mean, we haven't had any special meetings, you know, which normally, you know, we would have one a month, starting at 7:00, so I'm okay with that.
Well, it's next week's vacation week, anyway, so you, you know.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? If not, I'll go to public comment. Anyone in the public? If there's no selectmen's response, we can adjourn.
Kevin, sorry, move to adjourn.
Mark, check it.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all for.
Okay, have a good evening.
Take care, everyone. Good night, everyone.